Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Se go ani buju wache ya kwe kwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who are entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that, we will officially call tonight's meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Okay, thank you. So first, we will approve the addits. The only thing that we have on our addits tonight is the addition of a delegation. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counsel McLaren, seconded by Counsel O'Sanick. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Deputy Mayor Bowman.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I, Ryan Mooney, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 1, Paragraph 3, Report Number 19. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be perceived that I have a conflict in regards to the third clause that with respect to the $60,000 amount to be funded by a project undertaken by the utilities. I, Ryan Mooney, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 4, Report Number 18. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be deemed that I have a pecuniary interest in the wastewater Cataract Way Bay and impost wastewater Cataract Way Bay amounts in regards to this report, and I will declare on the entire report. I, Ryan Mooney, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 2, Report Number 18. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be deemed that I have a conflict in this matter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Cannon.
Thank you, and through you. I, Adam Cannon, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Report Number 2, Clause 3, as my spouse is employed at Home Base Housing.
Okay, seeing no other declarations of potential pecuniary interest, we will move on. We have no presentations this evening, but we do have one delegation. Paul Bush of BitSwift Technology Solutions will appear before counsel to speak to Item 2 of Report Number 19 received from the CAO with respect to the Bell Canada Internet of Things Proof of Concept Partnership Proposal. So invite Mr. Bush, and just a reminder that all delegations have five minutes to speak.
Thanks for inviting me. It's my first time here. It's pretty interesting. I'd like to, yeah, okay, if we can show the screen up there, that'd be great. I'm a local technology company in town here. I do a lot of networking stuff, so this Internet of Things and smart city venture is very interesting to me and aligned with what I do. The first thing I want to show you is a project I've been working on since 2014. It's a distributed ledger that uses blockchain technology. It's a global network essentially that has 2,000 peers, about 2,000 people cooperatively participating on this network. And I just want to make sure that the city and city officials are aware that things like this are happening in the city, and maybe we can use them to help the city become innovative. So with all due respect, if we can look up at the projector here, I will open the window for the BitSwift Market and Block Explorer. And so again, this is a project I've been working on since 2014. This is a distributed ledger that we could use in Kingston to make the government open, more transparent, and immutable. I don't see why not. We've had this in production now for four years, and it is being used on a global scale. I'd urge you all to check out, you know, local opportunities rather than seeking out large corporations that may want to come in and put in their own infrastructure where maybe we already have this stuff deployed locally and it's just not being paid attention to, or the right people aren't asking the right questions. So this is a more global network I've been working on. I want to move more to a local concept that I've been working on for about a year now, which is actually a mesh network downtown. And so if we're moving into a world that relies on internet connectivity, where all of our devices are connected, our shirts connect to the internet, the cars around us are driving autonomously, and they're communicating with each other, the Internet of Things requires internet everywhere. And probably, without anybody knowing, we have silently been working on a mesh network infrastructure downtown, which actually we could enable tomorrow and supply free public internet for all Kingstonian residents. It's just a matter of flicking a switch. And so I'll get into that right now. And so we have access points deployed at Confederation Place, and these access points are all cloud managed as proposed in the Bell proposal for the Internet of Things, making our cities smart. You can view all the stats on this network. I have approval. I've talked to these people to be able to show you this stuff. You can pull in the top applications that are being used on this network, who's doing what. You can pull in the top clients, like how much bandwidth they're pulling and pulling, where they are even. So location, you can export all this data from this system, and you can import it into Excel or whatever to analyze it. Now, this is one network we have set up downtown. We also have similar concept mesh networks set up at other businesses, so at Coffee &amp; Co., which is just kind of down the road on the other side of the block. We have another mesh network set up there. Again, I've spoken to these people. They've approved me talking about this in front of you today. We can go down even on the map and see these access points live on the map at Coffee &amp; Co. in real time with everybody connected to them and in real time seeing exactly what they're doing, what device they're on even. We can even turn their device off, okay? So if you look at our network at Coffee &amp; Co. and then look down at our other network, which would be at Confederation Place, we're really not far away from City Hall here, but we have a third network set up at Sir John's Public House, or actually, sorry, the Public House. So now we can really do triangulation downtown, and I will show you how that looks. So if we move to Sir John's, they have the same interface, three different locations, all meshed together, all providing real-time stats, all locally to me, to our company.
30 seconds.
Okay. So if we go down, we can see Sir John's on the map. I can zoom out, and you can see pretty much we have downtown covered. I'll show you how this looks on a nice MS Paint document, but this is our downtown mesh network that we've created, an infrastructure that's not being used yet for the Internet of Things, that's powered by the business infrastructure that's already there. You don't need to install anything else. You just need the right applications to tie into these things. And that's why I'm here today, to ensure that you're all aware of this, that local people are doing this, and we want to be involved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Counsel McLaren.
Thank you. So it sounds like you are actually doing commercially what one of our strategic plan goals was, which is to create Wi-Fi downtown. Is that correct?
Absolutely. So we've actually deployed downtown Wi-Fi internet between three different places. We could easily create a fourth SSID called City of Kingston Internet of Things Downtown and turn that on tomorrow. And it would be using collectively the bandwidth between these three locations, and everybody downtown would have a basic tier of internet access. I would propose that the city subsidize the internet coming from these places, just pay their internet for them, and give everybody downtown free Wi-Fi. Everybody could check the weather if they needed to, or get directions, you know, if you're traveling, you want to connect real quick, you'd have that ability. And so we've done this in a year. Next year, I'll be twice as far, and the year after that, I'll be a little bit further. And my goal is to cover the whole city with a mesh network so that we're not relying on a single infrastructure, a single company for all of our data, so that our data is distributed and actually the foundations of this data, the whole infrastructure is powered by the very companies that have that capacity within them. That value flows within the business, out locally to the people that, you know, the people would come into that business, right? So I just see it as a much better system than farming out to larger corporations when maybe you're just not even aware of these kind of dark nets that are there that can be turned on, and that will be expanding throughout the future.
Thank you. Counsel McLaren?
May I ask also, from your perspective in a smart city idea that we have here, how would the blockchain help government, and how can it be applied in government?
Right. So blockchains, for one, are immutable and transparent, and I think that's something any government should really be pushing for and towards. And that means making like public records publicly available and transparent so anybody can access them, and also the ability to make them immutable so people can't go back and like change records and change anything relating to the security of, let's say, a city or a country. So all in all, I think implementing blockchain, it's going to be inevitable. It will happen. It's just a matter of time. It's just a matter of building the right apps on top of it. For one, like I can just envision a really easy application on blockchain could just be distributed and open voting, where like, let's say, every Kingstonian in the city gets assigned a voting token, and only if you can prove you live in the city do you get this token. And you can cast that token to vote, and everybody on the network will be able to see in real time these votes being cast and who they're cast for. There would be no writing a paper, writing on a piece of paper and putting it in a box and hoping for the best. This would be a distributed network, an open network, where everybody could audit in real time who's voting for what, and it'd be 100% secure.
Deputy Mayor Bowman.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. Just curiosity, is this the first time you've kind of brought this, I guess, to this level of attention, that this exists and that this is something you've been working on?
My blockchain network has been public since 2014, but never have I brought it to like this type of venue before. So it's more like my community is online and distributed. My, actually, my whole team working on this project is online and distributed. I don't have like any employees locally, so I have guys all over the world, even in Nigeria, helping work on this. It's a community effort, but like the business is here, and I would love to see that our networks get used here and that they're just not like ignored because some other big corporation comes in and says, you know, we're partnered with whoever. Well, you know, why not take advantage of this? You know, it's free. The infrastructure's there. It's open source.
So just to follow that up, like I think it's great, don't get me wrong, but with the mesh topology you mentioned, it's free, but just to kind of show you, I guess, what is some of the issues we may deal with is if two people are beside each other and they both want to offer this, how do we decide who gets subsidized and who doesn't? Because they would already be kind of covering that area. So say somebody's beside the public house, and they find out we happen to subsidize the public house, and then everybody along that street all of a sudden wants their internet paid for by the city, so they all offer to become access points to that. So do you see that?
So I see that being more of like a city issue at that point, dealing with all the different people, right? But I can tell you right now, the three companies I deal with, the three I just showed you today, I phoned them all today, and I let them know about this example. Hey, would you have any issue if we either leased a portion of your internet out that you already have in there to make it available to the public for free? Or even that, would you allow us to come in and put our own infrastructure in? Would you allow the city to come in and pay for their own infrastructure? And not one of them said they'd have any problem with that. And I think that's something that maybe the city and the local businesses should maybe discuss a little bit more, because without discussing it, these ideas would just be blank, you know? And other solutions will be put in place regardless of any of this other infrastructure that we have out there. And I'm not saying that this mesh net, like you look at it, it's not powerful, you know, as powerful as it needs to be to power the Internet of Things for tomorrow, but this is a start, you know? And with enough money and funding, I mean, I did this in a year with no money and no funding and on my own. Give me two years and give me some money, and we can really try some things out.
All right. Thanks so much for presenting tonight. Counsel Cannon.
Thank you, and through you. I think that everything you're saying is correct. Like there's a whole ocean of blockchain technologies that are going to emerge and change the way we live. The concern I have is the timing of everything, like whether we can adopt something like this immediately, as it's only a small portion of downtown compared to what we're seeing today, which could be much more robust. Is that, like, I'm just concerned, it seems kind of last minute to look at this now compared to what we're looking at. Like, I think what you're saying is true, it just may not happen today.
So you don't have to look at this now at all. I'm going to tell you, I'll keep building it, and whether you use it or not is going to be up to you guys. It would be helpful if, you know, the city researches these alternative networks, maybe mesh networking, and maybe alternative public blockchains that have been already used and shown to be secure and public. You know, it would be helpful to have those second opinions. But whether people, you know, whether this becomes City of Kingston internet or not, I don't, personally, I don't care. I'll continue to build it, knowing that in the future I'll personally have use case for it, you know? Having a distributed network is, can be quite powerful, and having a subset of distributed computers and being able to utilize all their processing power in the future will be quite helpful.
Okay. Counsel Strout.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for this fascinating appearance. If I could just sort of summarize sort of what you're saying for folks watching at home, maybe, or that maybe don't know the Internet of Things and the connectivity that you're talking about. You've talked about sort of over time how things will change and it's sort of inevitable, and the crucial difference from what I'm getting from what you've said today is that this, this capacity, this internet capacity exists, the infrastructure is already there, and it is expanding on its own, in this case, in the private locations and businesses that you've mentioned. And of course, other businesses have their own infrastructure already, and so on, and so on. And how exactly does that differ from what's being proposed to council today with the large corporation that also has infrastructure everywhere? Like, what is the fundamental? I think I know, but if you'd just explain that for the folks.
So the main difference being is that this is value that's already in our economy that you're just overlooking. These access points are already there. The infrastructure's already there, and this is value that will remain in our local economy. This is not some big corporation coming in, putting their network, and then extracting all this data to farm out to, you know, other countries. This is local value, and this is coming right out of these businesses that it's already there, it's already broadcasting. Why not use it? And, you know, like I mentioned before, maybe it's not cut out, like mesh networks, there are issues there, but it should be at least looked at and at least compared to the alternatives, which are centralized, large corporate kind of scenarios.
And on the, on the aspect of openness and transparency, do you see a fundamental difference between this sort of community model that you're, that you're involved with, which is sort of like voluntary participation, right? It's, people are volunteering to be part of it, and it grows that way, by people just joining, and there's no cost, it's just using what's already there, as opposed to something that's proprietary in the context of a large corporation? Is there a fundamental difference when it comes to transparency between those two models?
Absolutely. I mean, I think with any closed-off corporation or company, there's always things that they don't want the public to be aware of. You know, there's a lot of, I shouldn't say this here, but politics, right? So when you have, sorry, when you, when you have an open ledger and open source code, anybody can participate, anybody can audit it, anybody can see what's happening, and I think that's much more powerful, especially moving forward, you know, with everything being interconnected, than closed doors and like lost opportunities, you know? The future's open, the future's decentralized, the future's not centralized and closed.
Okay. Counsel Hutchison.
Thank you, Your Worship. So you're, as I understand it, you're touting the advantages of a decentralized or distributed system versus a more centralized, large corporation system.
I think both systems have advantages and disadvantages, and I'm calling to your attention that both systems should be looked at before making important decisions as to, you know, just one system is better because. I just want, I don't want my jobs lost to large corporations, and as you can see here, I'm putting in a lot of effort to establish local networks that local people are using or local values coming out. I don't want to see that value exported. I don't want our data exported. I'm trying to conserve that here and help the local economy. And I mean, what better, if you're going to create a smart city, to look at the, if you're going to be smart about it, look at the local infrastructure you already have, you know? And maybe it's not apparent, maybe it's not out there, it's not broadcasting, but it's there, and people are building it. It's not just our company, and I'm sure there's many more, and maybe these other companies we can link with. So it's, it's, you got, it's not about comparing. Both systems have ups and downs, like no system is perfect, right?
Is there an argument that a decentralized or distributed system could be or more secure than a centralized system?
It could be more secure, less secure, depending on how it's deployed, right? There's arguments, again, on both sides. I'm going to tell you straight out from experience and the way I just see everything going is the future is not centralized. It will be decentralized. Your data will be spread upon many devices across many countries, and it will be encrypted, and it'll be split into little tiny bits and bytes, and all of those bits and bytes will be on thousands and millions of computers. There won't be a central data center. It'll be a distributed computational network that powers the future. It's not going to be a central office with a central server in it backed by a central company. I really don't believe that.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, so we have two briefings on our agenda tonight. First, Paul McClatchy, Director of Environmental Initiatives, will provide introductory remarks and introduce Dr. John Small, Canada Research Chair in Environmental Change and a professor in the Department of Biology at Queen's University, to speak to Clause 1, Report Number 19 from the CAO with respect to the update of the Kingston Climate Action Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. The report that I want to speak to tonight is, does contain a lot of information, but there are four things that I want to briefly highlight. One is our emissions performance to date. The second will be actions that we've undertaken to reduce our emissions, some potential new actions that we flagged, and some of the recommendations that are within the report. Our most recent community emissions data is from 2015, and we will be updating that this year, but it does indicate that we have achieved approximately a 12% reduction in our greenhouse gas emissions over our 2011 emissions, and we're on a trend to achieving our 2020 reduction target of 15%. That's excellent, but it is important to note that the majority of these reductions have come from the greening of Ontario's electricity supply, so we can't take credit for that. But we can take credit for the many actions that have been taken by city departments and our community partners that have helped stabilize our emissions profile and reduce some emissions. And some of the notable examples of these include expansion of our public transit system and the exceptional ridership growth there, the success of Utilities Kingston's conservation and demand management programs that allow people to retrofit their commercial and residential buildings, our planning focus on infill development and density, our organic green bin program, our municipal support for renewable energy generation through the FIT and microFIT programs, and creation of the Sustainable Kingston Green Economy Program. These actions are good, but they're not going to be enough to get us to the 30% reduction that we're targeting for 2030. We're going to need to identify new programs and projects that will focus on where our emissions are the greatest. Now, the pie chart that's up there right now shows where our community greenhouse gas emissions come from, and as you can see, it's overwhelmingly from natural gas and gasoline. We're on a pretty good track to reduce gasoline use right now by invest, our investment in public transit and our active transportation, and more recently, our investment in the electrification of cars and other vehicles. But our natural gas use is going to be harder and much more expensive than it to crack. One of the recommendations of tonight's report considers adding some scope to a existing Utilities Kingston project. It's their biosolids and biogas master plan, and we want to be able to assess how we might be able to create a renewable natural gas product right here in Kingston by using organic waste from homes, businesses, and institutions in conjunction with the biosolids that are produced from our sewage treatment plant operations. As municipal departments, we're going to continue to assess opportunities for greenhouse gas reduction in our annual work plans and budgets, and as we consider how to move forward toward our 2030 reduction targets, we have the good fortune of having some of the world's leading researchers on matters of climate change and emission reduction right here in Kingston. And with that in mind, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. John Small, Professor of Biology at Queen's University. He's going to provide some words on the global perspective and context to our local climate change plans. So over to you, Professor Small.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Mayor, counsel, very nice, very happy to be here for this short presentation on the critical issue of climate change. In my view, without a doubt, the most pressing issue society faces now is human-induced climate change. I have been working on this issue for decades, and I would love to have been wrong. The vast majority of scientists would have loved to have been wrong as well. We were not wrong. Greenhouse gas-induced climate change is a wicked problem, and the longer we wait to deal with the problem, the worse it is, and far more importantly, the fewer options we have. We may still hear in some sections of the media that it is a controversial scientific topic, but it is not, nor has it been for some time. If you believe that smoking is bad for your lungs, I would argue, as would very many other scientists, that the data showing greenhouse gases are linked to global warming is stronger than the evidence for the negative effects of health, of tobacco on health. To quote the US Senator David Moynihan, Daniel Moynihan, "Everyone is entitled to his own opinion, but not to his own facts. The facts are in." No one is saying climate change is simple. It is not. If anyone tells you it's simple, they haven't really been working on the problem. Does that extraordinarily hot summer day last summer mean it was part of global warming? No. Can your basement flooding last year be 100% linked to greenhouse gases? No. No, no single event can be, but the increased likelihood of it happening can be. It is a bit like Russian roulette, where you place one bullet in the chamber of a revolver, spin it, and there's one chance in six for the bullet to fire. Extreme climate events have always happened. I work on scales of thousands of years in my research. They've always happened, but now we're adding greenhouse gases to the formula. We are playing Russian roulette with two bullets in the chamber. And as we add more greenhouse gases, we add another bullet. The occurrences of extreme events like massive The occurrences of extreme events like massive rain or snowstorms, droughts, extended hot spells, so forth, increase in likelihood and magnitude. Just check your insurance rates. Are they going down? I doubt it. Mine certainly aren't. We wasted many years waring when we could have been starting to address the issue, but for many years, society as a whole has failed to act. The longer we wait, the more difficult and more expensive the problem will be, the fewer options we will have, and we will need options. Greenhouse gas-induced climate change is a global problem and therefore needs a global solution, but action has to start locally. We have to stop using the old tired excuse that we are not going to do anything until every county, or every municipality, or every country agrees to sign on. This is just crazy and living in denial. To use a Canadian example that a former Minister of the Environment once used, he claimed that it came to climate greenhouse gas agreements, and using a Canadian analogy of a canoe, he claimed he had no intention of paddling a canoe until everyone else was paddling. Well, that may be a good soundbite for the media, but to extend the analogy further, if I am in canoe with other people, and that canoe is leaking and filling with water, I am going to start bailing, and I am not going to say I'm not going to do anything until everyone else is bailing. Our canoe, with me in it and our children and grandchildren, is sinking. We need to start bailing to keep afloat. Our planet is a sinking canoe, and we are very, very close to drowning. We all need to start bailing, and bailing fast. We wasted years, long after the science was definitely showing we have to start moving fast on action, but instead we use diversion tactics of not doing anything until everyone agrees to take action. Interestingly, the same governments don't seem to need everyone on board when they, for example, start military interventions. Then they are showing leadership, apparently. Well, it is time for some leadership on the most serious problem facing the planet today, global warming. We will never have total agreement on any issue, any issue. One thing we have to stop doing is to stop talking about how much does it cost to combat climate change, and start asking the real question, how much does it cost not to combat climate change? The latter answer is far more horrifying than the costs of mitigation. Will a Kingston plan solve a global problem? Not alone. But to quote the famous anthropologist Margaret Mead, "Never doubt that a small group of committed people can change the world. Indeed, is the only thing that ever has." We have to take leadership and action, and the Kingston plan is an important start, in my opinion. It is a local step, but Kingston has, in my view, always punched above its weight as a city. Let's show Canada and the rest of the world that we can be leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Council? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. Okay, we move on to our second briefing this evening. Craig DeJardin, Senior Manager, Innovation and Institutional Partnerships, will provide introductory remarks and introduce Gary Semplonius, Senior Vice President of Sales, Bell Canada, who'll speak to Clause Two of Report Number 19 received from the CAO with respect to the Bell Canada Internet of Things Proof of Concept Partnership Proposal.
Your Worship Mayor and Council, on tonight's agenda, we have a report that builds on the themes that were identified in the Smart City Update Report presented to you in December. That report suggested that new models of collaboration with public and private sector partners could provide value in terms of testing, learning, and retesting to create solutions to the challenges that our community faces. The process of testing new ideas before adopting them is not unlike the successful trials of the bike-sharing model, a drop bike. Businesses need opportunities to share ideas and technology with real customers to provide proof of concept, and the city needs to explore cost-efficient and effective and timely solutions to our challenges. The proposed Bell Canada Pilot Internet of Things partnership is another example of this new model of collaboration. I am pleased to introduce Gary Semplonius, Senior Vice President, Business Sales and Marketing for Internet of Things and Smart City Solutions at Bell Canada, who will provide some comments on the pilot. Gary?
Thank you, Craig. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the kind introduction to speak tonight. It's my pleasure to be here on behalf of Bell Canada to talk about this pilot partnership between Bell and the city of Kingston. This initiative started in March of 2017, almost one year ago, and it's been an exciting journey with two visionary organizations coming together to explore better ways, to explore ways for cities to work better. The goal of the pilot is to find ways to use technology to serve the community of Kingston, and really create a mobile, efficient, collaborative, and environmentally sustainable smart city. And this program is really all about partnerships, not just partnerships between Bell and the city. We've had a long and strong relationship with the city, and we're committed to a partnership in this very exciting and exceptional project, but much beyond just those two players. Bell, in our Internet of Things strategy and Smart City product portfolio, bring to communities like Kingston some of the best players in the IoT space around the world, companies like IBM, Esri, and Cisco, who are all proven Bell certified partners. We've also partnered with academic institutions in the area for the purposes of research and PhD around this pilot program, organizations like Queen University, Algonquin College, and St. Lawrence College, and finally, some obvious tourism partnerships and job opportunity creations through this exciting pilot. Canada's very large, and as you heard referred to earlier, we are a very large corporation, and there are lots of different cities throughout Canada that we could choose for such a partnership. And we chose Kingston for a number of reasons. One is Kingston has always demonstrated thought leadership, and they continue to do so throughout all of our discussions around the Smart City pilot. Kingston had, before our discussions, a very progressive stance on smart cities, and they understood clearly the benefits of such a program. Kingston also has ecosystem readiness. Organizations like healthcare and utility partnerships aligned and ready to support such initiatives, as well as a highly educated workforce. And of course, there's a strong historical relationship between Bell and the city, demonstrated not only by wireless coverage enhancements recently by Bell, fiber enhancements recently by Bell in this area, but also important platforms and mental health initiatives that we've launched together with the city of Kingston. Bell is also very excited about the possibilities of extending this program beyond Kingston proper into the entire eastern Ontario region. And so together, Bell and the city will create a smart city platform through our pilot, which could evolve into a number of various applications and benefits for the city and the community, including managing system performance in real time, identifying and responding to operational issues in real time, and using real-time data to smartly predict incidents with the objective of containment and avoidance. And finally, evaluating the impact of policies and programs throughout the community as you digitize your solutions and gather data on the impact of those solutions. Bell is extremely committed to the success of this program, not just in Kingston, but throughout all of the regions that we serve. And as a demonstration of our commitment, we're making investments locally as well in terms of expertise in the areas of hardware, network, platforms, data management, security, applications, and networks. And we're also bringing resources to the program, as you heard earlier. This is a three-P partnership where Bell is bringing not only network enhancement and coverage benefits to the community, but also investing dollars in the project to ensure its success. So on behalf of Bell, again, I want to say thank you for the opportunity, and we look forward to the partnership with the city of Kingston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counselor Shrop.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for that. Just if you can sort of answer this in a simple way.
The only way I can.
Yeah. The, obviously, you know, the corporation has an interest in coming to Kingston. You've said several reasons why. What, and willing to invest some money here in this growth, what is the sort of end result, sort of outcome that Bell, regards of what it does for Kingston, what does it do for Bell? What does this partnership do for Bell?
So the Internet of Things and Smart City is a core part of our growth strategy. So it's the next wave of applications to leverage the network investments that we've made throughout Canada. And, you know, it has taken us, we're at seven and a half million subscribers on our wireless network today. It's taken us 30 years to get there. We believe that by 2022, there'll be over eight million IoT connections on our network. So it is a significant part of the growth of internet, wireline, wireless infrastructure in Canada, and as the leading player in that space, we want to be at the forefront of IoT and smart city.
Is there, is there a lot of competition from smaller players that you need to stay ahead of? We heard from someone, a very small local player, who said that a different kind of model was possible that sort of related, but is that actually competition to the corporation? Or is it, like, who would the competition be? I mean, I don't know the marketplace as well as you do.
Sure. So it's an interesting market. In our traditional markets, I think we all know who are the other carriers who Bell would compete with. In new markets such as this, it's less clear. You know, I would say from a network perspective, we are still really competing with the traditional carriers out there. From a coverage, capacity, and speed perspective, it's really not possible for anybody to keep up with those big players in terms of what are the connectivity requirements. But really, connectivity is just a small part of any IoT or smart city solutions. You need sensor information, you need data and data security, you need software to manage the environment, and you need the applications and solutions. And I would suggest that rather than refer to these opportunities as open and local versus corporate and closed, it's really less about what is the right enablement platform, which we see the role that we would play. And once that enablement platform is in place, it is a collaborative environment. We have literally, in our smart city portfolio, literally hundreds of partners, okay? And we work with them, and we open up our system to enable those partnerships for whatever the best solution is in those different cases. So this isn't about us coming in with our predefined partners, predefined applications. For the pilot, we've got some existing partners who we're going to leverage, absolutely, but there's lots of opportunities. We're in the network and network security business, and we bring in lots of partners to layer on top of what we provide as an enablement platform for IoT and smart city-type solutions. So I don't think it's an us versus them. It can be an us and them, depending on what are the specific opportunities. And of course, there needs to be scale and mass interest in those products and services for us to enable them on our platform, but we've done it literally in hundreds of cases.
Right. So the original question is about the direct competition, and really, it is just the other mobility providers, and that's the only players that would be able to provide this, to compare apples with apples. It would really just be...
If we're talking about the pilot that we're exploring right now and have proposed to the city of Kingston, I think that's a safe thing to say, yes.
Counselor Schell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I'm heading to the digital smart kiosks and trying to understand, in my English, what this all means.
It's good news. I'm in sales and marketing, so I don't speak technology either. Don't worry.
Well, yeah, you do. Internet of Things, Proof of Concept Partnership Proposal, I'm gone. So, we're going to have screens and educational and tourism content, so I'll just zone in on that. Is the plan that, say, Tourism Kingston feeds the kiosk's information that is static? Or are these kiosks planned to be sort of receptive to questions, almost like a Google?
Sure.
Or is it, are you there yet? Is this more of a...
These devices can be as interactive as we choose them to be. Okay, so really, again, it's about an enablement platform. It's about taking what used to be, you make a decision and you live with that decision for a long period of time. This is about digital, interactive, and customizable. So if you think about the kiosk as it's connected to the larger network, so you can do anything within that kiosk, make any changes in any real time that you want to make to that kiosk, in terms of the information that is being presented on the screen, the offers that are being made and presented on the screen, as well as how you want your community to interact with those kiosks. So there is the ability to interact and interface with those kiosks, but it's really up to us together to decide what do we want to enable in those kiosks. It's not meant to be, you know, a new Google screen where you can go and look things up and be a replacement for a computer. These are obviously outdoor, large, high-traffic areas, multipurpose devices beyond just Wi-Fi and internet connectivity, public safety, digital signage, a variety of different applications.
Thanks for that. So basically, it's going to be the staff of the city of Kingston and staff of Bell, who are going to create whatever is on the kiosks, that basically, we're just at the very beginning of this? Have you done this, then, in other cities, or are we pretty much it?
We're just about to.
Okay, so this is brand new?
It is relatively new technology in Canada, rolled out throughout the world, okay? So we have traveled around the world, and that's why we've partnered with some of the organizations who we've partnered with. They have done this before. This is, they're not learning at Kingston. This is proven technology. Europe, very progressive in this area, lots of cities who have, you know, really blazed the trail in terms of smart cities, and we've chosen from some of those organizations to make sure we're bringing the best of breed to the city of Kingston.
Thank you. I think what I'm trying to get at is you're using the word "technology," and what I'm seeing is human beings are actually going to work out what the technology does.
Exactly correct.
Yeah, and we can wind up making it sound way too much like technology's doing something. It's people that are creating what other people are going to use. Okay, thank you.
Counselor McLaren.
Thank you. You spoke of an enabling platform. This, I imagine, is the Bell Smart City platform that you're referring to?
That's right.
Yes. Now, in the description here, it sounds they're talking about a single integrated view, and they're talking about the problem of disconnected and desperate systems. So it sounds like it's very centralized versus the other paradigm, the decentralized networks that are approaching right now. Is that an accurate description?
It's not the network that's centralized or decentralized. It's the command and control and the ability to manage and monitor the operational environment of the city, whether it's energy management, water leak detection, whatever the different systems are that you're trying to manage. It gives you the ability to manage and monitor that data all at the same time collectively, rather than multiple different organizations trying to determine what's happening through multiple different platforms.
Yes, I believe that's what the decentralized one can also do. So I'm just curious, but from a philosophical or paradigm level, it's still the older sort of technology that Bell has invested in, like with centralized storage facilities, centralized switchboards. Is that correct, or are you moving towards a decentralized...
That sounds like an opinion. I'm not sure.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I don't know how to respond to that. I don't, I don't, we are not investing in older technology, and I'm, you know, I'm not an expert on the paradigm of centralized versus decentralized computing, and which is better. That's not the business that we're in, nor is it one that we're suggesting.
Thank you.
Counselor Holland.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. So the information provided thus far seems to be mostly focused on how this would benefit us, the city staff, in managing information, providing information to the public, which is something that we have been concerned with. One other concern that we've had, which I didn't see addressed yet, has to do with, I guess, and this is like probably out of date, but the whole CRM situation, the ability to kind of manage our communications as a city. There is some reference here to social media analytics, essentially, which is pretty straightforward, but is there something in this proposal, in this pilot, that would lead to not better, more accessible information, but better, more effective communications between members of the public and staff or council, for example?
Okay. Before I answer, can you just give me a little bit of context of what you mean by the CRM issue?
Sure. So I, what, we, I see it as a sort of a two-way situation, flowing of information, where the, many times, members of the public want information, they want to know when their garbage is getting picked up, that type of thing. Those are kind of basic applications. But other times, there are more complicated issues... Um, but other times, there are more complicated issues. There are ways that individuals attempt to contact this, someone in the city for some purpose, or ways that we, we might want to contact them for some purpose. Is there any management system for communications that's involved in this pilot?
Yeah. So today, the perp, the, the underlying architecture, infrastructure, business model for Internet of Things, Smart City applications is to put sensors in things that can measure something and give you that information in real time to help you make better decisions. To make, for a city, it's to make, uh, your city more enjoyable for your citizens to live in and for people to visit. And that's the fundamental, underlying architecture of Internet of Things and Smart City. That's what it does. It gives you information in real time of what's happening so that you can make better decisions. It's not about how you then take that information and communicate it back to your community in the most optimal way. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, I do get that. I guess I'm just saying if, um, the question is more along the lines of if individuals, members of the public, um, have, what is the benefit to the individual member of the public who has a question or concern related to something that's going on in the city? Just, just to sort of break it down for, again, those at home.
Sure. So I'll give you an example, should I give you an example? Yeah. So this is not part of the pilot today, but as an example, you can do smart parking as part of a citywide Smart City initiative. You know, when, in the studies that we've done, roughly 30% of the traffic roaming around the streets are looking for a place to park. Okay, if there was a solution for those people that says, uh, this is the spot that's being held for you to park, tap here to pay, and we'll guide you using route guidance to that spot, that seems like a pretty big benefit, uh, for the community. And that's just one example. Uh, energy management. Okay, so I'm walking down a street late at night, and the streetlight is able to detect that I'm now on that street and walking, and therefore it should light up the street to make me safer. Those are the kinds of things, and this isn't people making these decisions behind the scenes. It's, you're using data and machine learning to, to, uh, you know what's the best thing to do in those situations. So you create that environment for the community.
Councillor Turner.
Thank you, and through you, Your Worship. Um, I'd like to thank you for coming here to Kingston and for choosing us to do this study. Uh, I appreciate that, and, um, I welcome you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask you a little bit more about how it will impact tourism, because I've, uh, I've been told some interesting things about this, that, um, you can plug in your cell phone and charge it at these kiosks, and that, um, along with the emergency 911, there's a possibility if you're looking for those, um, heart defibrillators, that you can find them at the kiosk as well?
Yep.
Do you have any more information about that you could share?
Yeah, I think you covered it pretty well. I mean, the, there'll be six kiosks, which is a fairly small number to start, but they'll be located in high-traffic areas. So yes, when people are in these parks or recreational areas and their, you know, their cell phone battery is starting to die, they can plug them in and, and charge them there. At that kiosk, perhaps you could put tourism signs about what's happening in the city tonight, places visitors to the city might want to, to go. What are some great restaurants or entertainment opportunities in the vicinity? Um, lots of great opportunities for businesses in the tourism sector, and obviously, lots of health and safety opportunities for people who aren't familiar with different locations of police, fire, ambulance, uh, availability to 911-type services through these kiosks. And as you said, the, the heart defibrillators uh, being made readily available through these kiosks as well. So I think there's some pretty obvious benefits. And it's really, again, once you've got the platform in place and you've enabled it, it's all the great thoughts that we're hearing in these rooms. And like you said, the people making decisions about how we use this platform to make the city better. It's the people that are really the ones who are deciding, how do we use this technology to improve the city for our community and for guests to the community.
Councillor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, there's one line in the report that says there's also the potential for local tech startups to work with Bell to develop, uh, IOT solutions. I was just wondering, are, is Bell currently working with local tech startups on Internet network issues?
Absolutely. So it's not Internet network issues, it's the whole IOT ecosystem.
Okay.
Okay, so as it relates to, so I would think about, um, IOT or Smart Cities in four different categories. Okay, there, you, first of all, you need a piece of electronics, something that's powered. You need software to manage those electronics. You need an application or a solution within that software. You need a sensor that's measuring something. Okay? And then you need network connectivity. What we, what we, our core business is obviously network connectivity, providing secure, high-speed, widely-coverage, high-quality, publicly-available networks. That's the business that we're in, and that's what we do. And quite frankly, there's not a lot of partnership opportunities in the area of network. In the other three areas, we literally partner with hundreds of different Canadian and global organizations. So yes, we do, and yes, we are open.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Cannon.
Thank you, and through you. Uh, appreciate the, uh, um, you coming here and choosing Kingston. Uh, the one question I had was related to, um, kind of the longevity of what we're doing. So, uh, one of the councillors that kind of mentioned, uh, various technologies that are emerging relate, which as they relate to, say, transparency, trust, safety, security, immutability, cost-effectiveness, a lot of things are coming in through blockchain technologies that might, uh, supersede what you're doing right now. How do we know, is, are you guys setting yourselves up to compete with these new emerging technologies? Or how does that relate? I think that that's worth knowing. I think there's a bit of a concern that we may be investing in something that, uh, could potentially be outdated within a short timeframe.
There's nothing worse than going to Best Buy and buying a TV and it's obsolete the minute you bring it home. Yeah, so, again, we're less about the specific, uh, um, infrastructure that's being chosen. We're more about creating a platform of enablement. Okay, and it's those four items of enablement. And on top of that, you can literally build anything. There's nothing closed about our system in terms of, once you've chosen a Bell Smart City platform, you're, you're locked out of any other new technology advancements that, that come our way. Obviously, from our perspective, we believe we are and will be the largest IOT player in Canada. Okay, and we will continue to do so. So if there is disruptive technology, alternative technology, I would like to think we'd be the first ones to invest in it, develop it, and implement it into our systems. So I, it's, it's hard for me to say you're guaranteed to not have any level of obsolescence with a decision that you made. Unfortunately, technology does change, and it does change quickly. The, I, I think the prudent thing to do is ensuring that you're, you're choosing the right partners who can shield you from those technology swings and make sure that they are putting you at the forefront of what's capable. But at some point, you do have to throw your line in the water and, and start fishing.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So, and I think you, you've referenced this, but I, I just want to make sure that, that I understand this. So we have a, a vision here in Kingston about creating this smart city, being a leading-edge community, uh, in the nation and, and beyond. So this is, this is really about making Kingston a laboratory for these new technologies that would then have the potential to then appear in other communities across the province and the nation and beyond. Is that, is that a, is that an accurate characterization of the vision that behind this?
Yeah, I would say it's, um, rather than a laboratory, I would say it's a showcase. A laboratory implies we're still testing things, and we're, we're seeing what happens. Uh, we know what's going to happen. And so what we're, what we're waiting for is the communities to embrace it. And so it's really a showcase of the technologies, and, and everything else, how you've characterized it, I think is 100% accurate.
And then the other question that I had, and, and again, getting back to the concern, is that we have a number of different local businesses, local innovators, technology firms. Uh, you're suggesting that this partnership would not exclude them, this would actually create a platform to include them and give them opportunities to be able to grow and to, to work together. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're, we are always looking to broaden our solution portfolio and to bring to market relevant and in-demand technologies. We are not in the business of many of the solution providers in the IOT space. We're in the secure network connectivity business, and we're bringing to our customers the best of breed in all of the different areas and partnerships, so that they have a complete, integrated, certified, end-to-end solution from a company like Bell that can be trusted. And if that means partnering with local or global, we can and will do both.
Great. Okay, so no other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have no further briefing, so we will move on. Next, two petitions. Are there any petitions to present? Okay, seeing none, we do have a motion of congratulations moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bohm, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to goaltender Genevieve Lacass on being named to the Canadian Women's Olympic Hockey Team for the 2018 Winter Olympics. Lacass is an incredibly gifted athlete who calls Kingston home. We are all very proud of you and will be cheering you on in Pyongyang, South Korea. Best wishes, Genevieve. So we will call the vote. Please vote. And that carries. We have no deferred motions, so we'll move on to reports. First, report number 18 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Shell, that report number 18 from the Chief Administrative Officer can send be received and adopted.
Okay, so we've separated items, is it one and four? Deputy Mayor Bohm? Okay, so we've separated items one and four for pecuniary interest. Are there any other separations from council? Oh, is it two and four? Two and four. Okay, so first, we will vote on items one and three. Item one is a word of contract, collection, and counting of transportation funds. Item three, renewal of the service-level agreement between the city of Kingston and the Kingston Association of Museums, Art Galleries, and Historic Sites. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, now we will vote on item two and four. Two is a word of contract, one new model year, 12,000-pound-capacity lift truck. And item four, new loan application to Ontario Infrastructure and Lands Corporation. We'll call the vote. Please vote now. And that carries. Report number, oh, sorry, I was doing two and four together. So that was just the vote on number two? Okay, okay. Okay, Deputy Mayor, you can come back. We're good. We are good. Report number 19 from the CAO, please.
Moved by councillor Cannon, seconded by councillor George, that report number 19 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, the first clause is the update on the Kingston Climate Action Plan. Councillor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a question for the staff member on one of the items in the report. Uh, it mentions one of the mitigation strategies, of course, is the increase in the tree canopy. You know, it's something very dear to me. Uh, it does, it, it, the way it was presented in the report, just simply number of trees planted the last two years, and then number, um, in the, uh, a number given for how many might, might be planted this year. And, and I was wondering if there's a further breakdown available for that. I believe it was 11,000 trees this year. Uh, I, I know we got a report at the ITP about the, uh, CRCA planting, uh, uh, program, and I'm assuming that's the bulk of, of that 11,000. Is there, do you have anything to add to that?
Mr. Clatchey.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't have a further breakdown for that, but I'm happy to work with our Director of Public Works to get that for you.
Councillor Sannick.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, the second clause in the recommendation is looking at funding opportunities and then bringing a summary of the funding opportunities to committee, which I imagine would be probably Environment, Infrastructure, Transportation Committee. So, um, again, about those trees, I know that the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change, that they have, um, a clause in their climate change action plan that says that they want to, um, double the number of trees within the boundaries of municipalities. They want to help with that. So I just wonder if you're aware of that, if there's any funding available, and if not, if that could be one of those funding opportunities you explore. I, I sent you an email at the beginning of the meeting. So it's clause 4.4, and just really, you know, asked M O E C C about that and see how they can possibly help Kingston. That would be great.
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, we did, uh, we did contact the province earlier in 2017 to look at funding for trees. Uh, most of the funding associated with climate change funding from the province is being directed through the Ministry of Natural Resources, through the, um, 50 Million Trees Program. That's more of an urban, or sorry, a rural-focused program right now, uh, but happy to contact them again and, and update you with, uh, more funding opportunities that might, might be on the horizon for more urban tree planting.
Councillor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, just a general question. Um, I think it was made, the point was made very well by the speaker about the seriousness of climate change. And it's in the report as well, where it says that, um, that one of the greatest threats to long-term quality of life Kingstonians, um, and people all over the world, is global climate change, um, caused by a naturally increasing atmospheric carbon dioxide levels. Um, in that context, and then when staff reports on this, quite understandably, they say, this potential recommends potential initiatives that are effective and affordable. And we set a framework for staff in terms of tax increases and policy, um, initiatives. But insofar as this is going to be difficult to reach our levels at 2030, and that the break-it-or-make-it date is often gives us 2050, and when, um, self-enforcing feedback loops start, if you, we don't curb dioxide, I was wondering what initiatives would be the most effective in reducing greenhouse gases if affordable, quote unquote, was not a criterion? In other words, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I think it's a very serious question. As, as the speaker even pointed out, that that's not the question we should be asking. We're on about whether we can afford it or not, because the situation is much more critical than that. So I was wondering if, you know, part of the problem we have is that people look at what can I do, and what can the community and the city do? And it's sometimes difficult to see a way forward, although obviously we've come up with the numbers, dozens of things that can be done. So I'm just wondering if affordable was not the criterion, what's the most effective or what would be the most effective measures we could take?
Mr. Clatchey.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I understand the question. Um, I think it's important to recognize that the investment that the municipality can make in things like public transit and electric vehicle chargers are investments in, that enable people to take the action that we want people to take, um, choosing electric vehicles or choosing public transit, choosing active transportation. Um, I think those are, are going to be very effective strategies because they leverage, um, the capacity of people to choose within our community. And it doesn't mean we have to foot the entire bill for the change. We foot the bill for the infrastructure that supports the change. Uh, that being said, I mentioned, uh, the issue of generating renewable natural gas. 52% of our greenhouse gas emissions as a community come from our use of natural gas. So anything we can do to reduce natural gas use or replace it with a lower-carbon-intensity fuel is going to pay dividends. And those are things like producing renewable natural gas, investing in, um, opportunities that allow people to retrofit existing buildings so that they are, are able to use less natural gas, and, uh, opportunities to maybe avail themselves of technologies that are expensive but have a high, uh, impact on reducing carbon. Things like geothermal and air-source heat pumps are, are rather expensive but very effective at reducing carbon footprint. are rather expensive but very effective at reducing carbon footprint. Those are, those are things at the top of my mind that would be impactful.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Thank you. And through Mr. Mayor, I just would like to add a couple of points. So, in terms of one of the slides that was up earlier, we, we were looking at two areas that were producing some significant emissions in terms of GHG. And I know Mr. McClatchy mentioned a few ways that we can do that, but in terms of reduction, I do want to point out that at the end of the day, it's not going to be just one or two, you know, approaches that we'll have to take to really decrease the emission of GHG. It's going to have to be a combination of multiple things, and simple things that may not necessarily cost a whole lot of money, but could include the way that we design our neighborhoods and encourage more active transportation, for example. And, and it's a combination of electric vehicle, design of our neighborhood, electric buses, new technologies that may also be coming online, and we know technology is changing so fast. I think your report speaks to some of them actually that are not quite out there yet and have not been tested. But at the end of the day, it's going to have to be an approach that's going to use multiple ways to, to get to the reduction that we're trying to achieve.
Thank you. Appreciate both those answers. I was not, I was just trying to sharpen the question. I wasn't suggesting there's a one-off solution by any stretch of the imagination. I, I do think that, that those things are good. I presume that solar and wind development would be also part of that overall solution.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Solar and wind are important in their own right, but what they do is they replace conventionally-generated electricity. And as I mentioned earlier, conventionally-generated electricity in Ontario is already very, very green, very low carbon. So, they may not be the, the best bang for the buck always, but I do believe that they will be part of a multifaceted solution to reducing our carbon footprint.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, we will call the vote on clause one.
Before I call a vote, I'd just remind council that we will have two votes for this. We will first vote on paragraphs one, two, four, and five, and then we will vote separately on paragraph three because of Deputy Mayor Bohm's declared pecuniary interest.
Great. Thank you. Okay. This is the vote on everything except for paragraph three. And that carries. So, now we will call the vote on paragraph three. And that carries. Clause two, Bell Canada Internet of Things Proof-of-Concept Partnership Proposal. Councillor McLaren?
Thank you. And first of all, I want to thank staff for taking so much time to answer a series of huge questions. And I just want to go through just three of them over again, just to make sure that I completely understood this upon some more reflection. The first one concerns what appears to be two divergent innovative lineages. And what I mean by that as an example would be, there was a time when we had to choose between investing in electric typewriters or word processors. One of those had a future, one of them didn't. And I'm concerned that at this moment in time, we are, we have to choose between philosophies of how to present or how to implement this, these visions. And I believe that both of them would be useful, but one of them probably has a greater future than the other, the centralized versus the decentralized. Are we making any firm commitments to one at this time that will have long tails of expense to get off if we choose the wrong one?
Mr. Jardine?
Through you, your worship, to the councillor. Note, the design of this collaboration is a, as a pilot. So, the idea is that we want to maintain control, set defined limits, decide what we're going to participate in, and then, as the recommendation says, report back to council in terms of results. I, I would defer to our CIO to discuss about centralized versus decentralized. That's not my area. But what I would say is that when it comes to the smart city strategy, IOT will just be one component. There was discussion earlier around blockchain, that that could be another component. There will also be an element of artificial intelligence and machine learning that we'll be exploring, that certainly is very topical right now, as well as virtual reality and artificial reality. So, as an overall city, a smart city strategy, there will be many components. So, hopefully that answers.
Thank you. And the second one had to do with the, the partnership in its entirety, the ability to have other entrepreneurs deal with Bell, work against Bell, work outside of Bell, come up with disruptive technology that hasn't even been imagined yet. None of this is being precluded in this, in the sense that somebody off the street with an idea that has disruptive and could take over the world like a Facebook or a Microsoft could still have this opportunity in spite of this particular agreement. Is that correct?
Absolutely. As part of this collaboration, as the borough's representative has spoken to, they are always open to working with, with businesses. We are working with a local company, AudioKinesis, around how do we incorporate different language accesses on, on the kiosks. They are a leader globally in, in that technology. Other technology companies certainly can come forward. Within the report and within the smart city update report, it does reference a program, a federal government program, the Smart City Challenge, that is, that is, actually, the deadline's the 24th of April. The city is examining how we can move forward with that. The first stage of that will be an engagement with public to find out how we can make their lives better in meaningful ways. The second component is going out to businesses in our community and saying, what capacities you have and what ideas do you have that we can integrate into our, our proposal?
Okay. And my last question, if I may. So, if I happen to know an engineer who just graduated from Queen's, or a bunch of them, and they have a few ideas, what would be the advice to them in order to participate in this?
Their advice would be to call me.
Will do. Thank you.
I'd be too, we're certainly already working. We have a great collaboration with Queen's University and St. Lawrence College, so we have mechanisms in place. I think a great example of that sort of collaboration is actually the Mayor's Innovation Challenge, which is about engaging students to solve problems here in the city. But we're also looking for additional opportunities. So, that could be faculty members, but it also could be students.
Okay. Councillor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. In the report, there is, in the executive summary, it talks about while creating new revenues. And then, when Mr. Simplonius was speaking, he mentioned restaurants. Say you're near one of these kiosks and you want to know where to go and eat, that that's possibly part of this. Is this part of the idea about creating new revenues, that it maybe we charge people for advertising on the kiosks? Or are you even at that area yet?
Through you, your worship, to the councillor, you're absolutely correct. The opportunity for these kiosks to provide wayfinding for visitors to our community on a touch panel display can show them where they could go to eat at a different restaurant. So, absolutely, the potential for, for advertising revenue is, is significant.
And next question, who gets the revenue?
Right now, we're at the stage of working with Tourism Kingston around this. We've, they have engaged, let's see, the company's Creative Displays, that is already a vendor that works with, with them. So, we're now, right now, we're determining that and discussing that.
Councillor Hutchinson?
Thank you, worship. From the presentation and of the answers, I probably know the answer to this, but I'll make sure when I was reading the report. Through this partnership, will there be any restrictions on the city and the, like, we're going to learn things from this, and we're going to develop our knowledge base and our skills, and this is all to the good, it seems to me. And will there be any restrictions on the city and the applicability of gained knowledge from this venture?
So, the, the knowledge and the derivatives of that knowledge that we gain is, is ours?
Is ours.
Yes.
And we continue to have our, control over our data, the security and all that.
Absolutely.
That's pretty clear. So, my, my second question is more like a due diligence question. We're going to take resources that we presumably budgeted in good faith or something, and we're going to take those resources and we're going to apply it to this. Now, maybe it's very advantageous. So, the question is, what is the opportunity cost? What are we giving up in order to redirect these resources?
Through you, your worship, to the councillor. In the case of the energy management solution, resources were allocated for this very purpose to integrate the various systems that we have. So, it's, it's not just the energy management, it's, it's the sensors on our HVAC units to ensure that the motors are not overheating, that would, would drive us to do repairs on them earlier. It ties in our security systems and other levels of system. So, we were working towards, in that case, that particular solution.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Thank you. And through, in addition to that, there are some departments and, and agencies, in particular Tourism Kingston, that were contemplating some form of technology upgrade already earlier in the year and have included funding in their budget without necessarily knowing exactly what the, the platform was going to be, but we're definitely contemplating technology upgrade.
That's good to hear. And now that it's pointed out, and remember, I came up with budget and some other situations. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Councillor Stroud?
Thank you, worship. Again, a question. So, one of the crucial elements in the platform is the presence of sensors in the Internet of Things platform, the, the sensors. Is, is that, is included in that, in that category cameras? Like, would cameras be some of the things that might be installed as infrastructure devices? Or are we talking about, like, what kind of sensors are we talking about?
Through you, your worship, to the councillor, we have been very mindful of the use of cameras as it relates to private, personal privacy. So, the sensors could be in the, in the roads that, that sense vehicles traveling over them. It, it could be cameras that don't, that it, that can remove individual images but look at vehicles. So, it could determine the difference between a, a transport truck, someone riding a bicycle, and someone driving a car.
Okay. So, built into the, I guess it's, it comes back to that whole concept of it is whatever we make it. So, built into the system would be the, the, you know, confidentiality requirements and the, and the protection of, of individual data as well. I, I can see that being sort of something that the public might focus on, is the loss of, loss of their confidentiality or loss of their information itself. So, that leads to my second question. So, is it possible with this partnership that Bell could acquire personal data of, of, of citizens despite the security measures that we may take? Is it possible?
Through you, your worship, we're working with legal, our legal department, with Bell's legal department. They don't want the personal information either, because they're, I would assume they're concerned about liability as well. So, we both share that desire not to have personal information that could open anybody up to liability.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay. So, we will call the vote on clause two. And that carries by a vote of 11 to 1. Okay. On to clause three, workers' compensation insurance requirements for vendors. Mr. Clerk, can I see you for a moment? Okay. So, we will call the vote then on clause three, please. Please vote.
One more, please.
Report number 20 from Planning Committee.
I'm pleased to submit report number 20 from the Planning Committee, duly moved and seconded. Thank you.
Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Turner, that report number 20 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
Okay. There are two clauses. Number one, approval of an application for zoning by law amendment 153 and 155 Brock Street. And clause two, approval of an application for zoning by law amendment C4 Zone, Prince Street Corridor, Williamsville Main Street. So, we will call the vote. And that carries. Report number 21 from Heritage Kingston.
Thank you, worship. I rise to present report number 21, moved and seconded for council's consideration from the last Heritage meeting.
Moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor Shell, that report number 21 from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
So, there are a number of items under both approval under statutory and non-statutory consultation. Would anyone like any of the items separated? Seeing none, we will vote on them as a whole, please. And that carries. Report number 22 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee.
It's my pleasure to present report 22 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee for consideration by council, moved by myself and seconded by councillor O'Sanick.
Moved by councillor Hutchinson, seconded by councillor O'Sanick, that report number 22 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay. So, we've separated clause three for councillor Camden's pecuniary interest. So, if there are no other separations, we'll vote first on clause one and clause two. Clause one is approval of the Kingston Arts Council Plan for Administration of Arts Funding for the Corporation of the City of Kingston in 2018. And clause two, appointment of public members to the Professional Development Working Group. And that carries. Clause three, homelessness services review, update, and recommendations. And that carries. Okay. We end up nothing under Committee of the Whole Information Reports. If you have a question, just raise your hand. Number one, report on agreements executed under delegated approval and signing authority October 1st, 2017 to December 31st, 2017. Number two, Eastern Ontario Leadership Council update. We have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business, we have a couple of motions. First, that the resignation of Catherine Gibson from Kingston Municipal Nonprofit Housing Corporation be received with regret. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor O'Sanick. Please vote. And that carries. Number two, that the resignation of Taufik Munib from the North Kingston Secondary Plan Community Working Group be received with regret. Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor- Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Hutchison. And that carries. Okay, we have one new motion this evening, moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Holland. Whereas Kingston will be one of the first Ontario communities to have a legal cannabis sales outlet, as chosen by the Ontario Government, and whereas the Association of Municipalities of Ontario has forecasted substantial increase of costs to policing, bylaw enforcement, public health and other services, with these costs being largely borne by municipal taxpayers, and whereas the Government of Canada has promised seventy-five percent of federal revenues derived from the sale of cannabis shall be shared with provinces and territories, and whereas the Kingston Frontenac Lennox and Addington Public Health Board on January twenty-fourth, 2018, passed unanimously the following motion, that the KFLNA Board of Health urged the provincial government to dedicate a portion of the cannabis excise tax revenue from the federal government to local public health agencies in Ontario. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Kingston fully endorses the Board of Health motion, and be it further resolved that the City of Kingston also seeks cannabis excise tax revenues to cover all additional costs of municipal policing and bylaw, and that upon passage, this motion be shared with Kathleen Wynn, Premier of Ontario, Charles Souza, Provincial Minister of Finance, Mark Garrettson, MP Kingston and the Islands, Sophie Koala, MPP Kingston and the Islands, Association of Municipalities of Ontario, Association of Local Public Health Agencies, and all Ontario municipalities with a population greater than forty thousand. Councillor Neil, you have the floor.
Thank you. This came out of the fact that several of us sit on KFLNA Board of Health, and this was a really sensible motion, I think, that passed unanimously at the Public Health Board. But upon looking into it and looking at some of the AMO position papers on this, it isn't just the Board of Health, although it's identified by AMO as an organization that could indeed, in its commitment to education and harm prevention, just as it spends a great deal on both the risks of alcohol abuse and tobacco abuse, might also, in the future, have a role to play with the question of cannabis and harm prevention. It just seems sensible that we looked into this. At the same time, in looking at the AMO position paper, it goes beyond just public health. There are, there is the potential for other costs being borne by the city. I want to make this clear that, frankly, I don't have an issue with the idea of legalizing and that was a decision that was made rightfully by the federal government, but there are impacts, potential impacts, on municipalities. Now, after, and I want to thank my secondor for supporting this motion, but after I looked into that, I learned that indeed we do have a commissioner who, this was dropped on her very full plate, of issues to explore. And so I'd like Commissioner Hurdle to speak to some of her looking into this matter on behalf of the municipality. So if there's any additional information that Commissioner Hurdle may wish to provide for, in the context of this motion, I would appreciate that.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So the model, obviously, that the province has adopted to legalize or to provide the distribution, legal distribution of cannabis, is one that's quite similar to the LCBO. So when we look at the implication from a municipal perspective, we didn't identify much of an impact in terms of bylaw services or licensing, because it would be technically like licensing a commercial establishment. So from that perspective, we don't anticipate that there would be much of an impact. I think where the main concerns have been raised was with public health and our conversations with public health in terms of education awareness to the public now that the substance will be distributed legally. And I know the police services have also mentioned some concerns as far as training and equipment that may be required as well to be able to detect, obviously, people that may be under the influence. So we don't have details yet in terms of what that could look like in terms of number locally here, but I just wanted to give council an overall overview of what we've been discussing.
And my other question, often, the whole idea of zoning and those kinds of questions often come up. And I know that I've had people ask about head shops that are legal businesses but are a couple of blocks from a middle school or a high school. Have we much consideration or has the province spoken about the zoning impact of this policy to date?
Commissioner Hurdle?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe it was in some time in December that we brought an information report to council that spoke to the potential location of a retail cannabis store. Essentially, the only thing that's required to establish one within the city is that the zoning is commercial in nature. So our zoning bylaw does not speak to specific distances when it comes to commercial establishment in terms of sensitive uses. But one of the things that we have looked into, because we do recognize that the public, and we had concerns from public health as well, in terms of the proximity of sensitive uses like schools, daycare. So we did look at our licensing bylaw, and our licensing bylaw provides basically, I believe it's a three hundred meter buffer from any, what we call the adult entertainment businesses. So we have recommended to the province that whichever location they select, which has to be a commercial location, so the zoning has to be appropriate, we have suggested to them that they should be applying or looking to apply this three hundred meter buffer from any sensitive uses, which we have also described in that report as basically the schools, the community centers, those types of places where you would have typically children gathering.
Thank you very much. I think both the public health motion that passed unanimously is sensible. I think AMO's kind of cautionary suggestions about the impacts that may affect our tax base potentially with additional expenses should be considered. So I'm hopeful that this, I think, very sensible motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Hutchison?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to get a little more information from the commissioner. When legalization has been touted, part of it was that the aspect of policing and the cost of policing would be less, because we would be undercutting what is, at the moment, illegal criminal activity, right? And that's part of the argument. So what I got from what the commissioner said, maybe she wants to elaborate on this, is that we think there's going to be more activity of people beyond the streets that are under the influence of cannabis. Did I derive that from your?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So an example of training and equipment that could be required to detect people that are under the influence would be, for example, while driving. Currently, obviously, if you're drinking and driving, the police is fairly well-equipped and trained to deal with that, but with the introduction of cannabis, of course, that's something that's going to be added on, and it's something that was identified as far as the type of policing that could be involved.
So I would think some people would think, well, this already goes on, wrongly perhaps, but it goes on. And so would it be engender, by legalizing it, are we engendering more of that behavior? Is that the argument? Or are we just identifying it? And I say that because I'm concerned, as per the motion, that this is just the beginning of this. We want, with the public health agencies, we'll be looking for funding to look after what might be greater activity that we don't care for, that is not good for the general public.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. I really don't think it's in my area of expertise to comment on whether or not the legalization will increase the use. That's beyond my area of expertise, to be quite frank. I think the, what has been done throughout the province, and I know AMO has been working quite a lot on that in terms of the costs relating to policing in particular. So what I've shared with council are basically comments that I've heard from some of our colleagues that work for police services.
Thank you.
Councillor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. So I guess I just wanted to maybe touch on, speak to the public health aspect of this, mostly keeping in mind the work that public health does and the need for, while we don't, obviously, based on what we've heard tonight, we don't have numbers associated with what costs might come about based on this change in legislation, but we do know that public health does important work, including quite recently, a lot of efforts to do with harm reduction, working on eliminating and dealing with the presence of opioids in Kingston and other areas across the province. Also, health promotion, ensuring the reduction of rates of chronic and preventable diseases, and some really important work on health equity. So dealing with the fact that those who have less are often the ones who are directly the relationship between income and poor health outcomes. So these are all efforts that public health currently undertakes. Not having the money available to deal with something like education involved with potential risks associated with cannabis use. We heard recently at our meeting that, just to give an example, because I know there's a lot of debate about whether there are risks, so this is just a little bit of information that we've received. Young people, apparently based on a study, are more likely to get into a vehicle that is operated by an impaired driver who has been under the influence of marijuana than to get in the vehicle when someone is under the influence of alcohol. So the kinds of initiatives that public health would be undertaking related to this change in legislation would be along the lines of education and those types of efforts that they're already doing in respect with two other substances, of course, but just to give you a sense of what we need to be concerned about and why we need to see some funding that is consistent and make sure that they can continue to do the work that they do. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. councillor George?
Thank you, your worship. Two items. First of all, I agree with the motion that's before us. At AMO, I think what we're trying to do is express that we need the province to assist because there's so much that's unknown about where we're going with this and what the potential risks are and what the costs are associated with it. So basically, there's a need to put the province on notice that they can't just simply assume that, you know, they're going to take in, and I don't even know what the number is now, it changes every day almost, all this money and not provide properly to the host municipalities. We do know through the Police Services Board, and correct me if I'm wrong, your worship, but we already have been asked or been offered grant funding in order to assist in the training of officers, in order for them to be able to identify and deal with individuals who may be driving a vehicle or simply on the street, as we sometimes see, that are partaking in the alcohol, but be able to identify and be able to deal with them. So that type of thing is what we need to see from the province in a number of areas. And so I think this motion is good because I think it'll strengthen AMO's case as well. We may be able to persuade other municipalities to take part in this and recognize that, you know, we cannot burden the taxpayer with the potential increases. From the policing perspective, speaking with the deputy chief one day, we're not really sure at this point in time. I know there have been reports out there that certain police chiefs have put forward about, you know, astronomical numbers related to what the additional policing costs are going to be. We don't know that in the Kingston region just yet, what those numbers may be, they may not be. We really don't know. But if we were in a position, or the province was in a position, to have some funding available that we could access, once we know what the risks are financially, then that would be a real plus for us. So I think this is a good time to get this motion forward because the time is ticking down now, according to our federal government and so on, that this is all going to happen. So we need to be prepared.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Councillor Neil, do you have anything to add? Okay, so we will call the vote then on new motion one. Please vote. And that carries. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, ask for minutes, please.
Moved by councillor Camden, seconded by deputy mayor Bohm, that the minutes of special city council meeting number two thousand and eighteen dash zero four, held Wednesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, and the minutes of city council meeting number two thousand and eighteen dash zero five, held on Tuesday, January twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, be confirmed.
And that carries. Okay, we have some tabling of documents and a number of communications. Is there any other business? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, ask for bylaws, please.
Deputy Mayor Bohm, you're excused for the first three bylaw votes. Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor George, that bylaw two be given its first and second reading.
That carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor George, that clause eleven point three four of bylaw number two thousand and ten dash one be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw two three readings.
That carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor George, that bylaw two be given its third reading. One more, please.
That carries.
Deputy Mayor Bohm? Deputy Mayor Bohm, you may return. Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor George, that bylaws 1 and 3 through 5 be given their first and second reading.
That carries.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor George, that bylaws 3 through 5 be given their third reading.
And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Turner. And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.